Okay, I would like to open the Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, meeting of the Warranton Board of Aldermen. And first off, I would like Gary Ock to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ock. Okay, first on the agenda, I would ask for approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of April 7th, 2015. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderperson Holly, to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting from April 7th, 2015. Roll call vote.
Alderman Drayor is absent. Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark is absent.
Okay. Motion passes four to zero with two abstentions. Next, I would ask for a motion to approve the executive session minutes from April 7th, 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from April 7th, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderperson Holly, to approve the executive session minutes from April 7th, 2015. Roll call vote.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero with two abstentions. Next on the agenda, we would open the meeting to hearing from anybody of the public. We always encourage people from the public to give any comments they have. We just ask that you keep them to five minutes. If you think it's going to be more than that, we ask that you be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the board or the mayor? Hearing none, I will move on. And next on the agenda, we will ask the same thing from the Board of Aldermen. Do we have any comments from the Board of Aldermen?
I do not.
I mean, I do have one comment. I think with the recent accident on the highway where the chemicals were spilled, a lot of discussion has gone on about the second overpass again, and I think that issue has passed away. And I think a couple of things need to be made clear, that that funding district was voted down by the 10 members of the community that had an option to vote on forming the district. And I know several of those people personally, and they are not easily swayed. They're very conscientious voters and took their obligation serious, and so they voted their conscience to vote the district down. I think the other thing the public needs to know as we look forward is the project was a $15 million overpass, and half of that was to be paid by the city and half of it is to be paid by matching funds through the state. And the state is not doing any new capital projects. So if you want to talk about the other overpass, why we don't have an overpass, I think you have to recognize that half of the funding string probably isn't available anymore because the state does not have funding to do additional projects. And I just wanted to make sure, because there's been a lot of rumors, name-calling, different things out on the internet, and I think it's, what's important to be out there is the factual information, and that is the state does not have the funds to fund it anymore. And so even if we redid the district, there would be no money available. That's all I have.
And to springboard off that, I'll just say, I really appreciate, appreciate not only how emergency management handled the situation, even though I know there was some frustration from people that were on the highway or had to be rerouted, I think they handled the situation very well and acted quickly. But also the community and the way they pulled together and supported people that were on the highway with different ways and different things. And it was just kind of, it's kind of nice. It's the second time we've done it as a community, and I think it just goes to show we are a good community and we have our hearts in the right spot. So I appreciate it for everybody.
Yes, very good. Anybody else caring? Tony?
You've got it pageful.
Okay, yeah, now we come to the mayor's comments, and this being my final meeting or whatever you want to call it, I would just like to, several things I want to say. First off, I would like to, I was given a unique opportunity to serve as mayor. Due to the unfortunate demise of Mayor Dyer, you know, we looked at, the board looked at what they wanted to do, and they decided to appoint a mayor, enter a mayor. So first off, I want to thank the board for their confidence in me in being able to serve out the term. And I know most of them are, you know, were new people on the board, but one in particular I would like to thank Alderman Ock, who I was on the board with back in the 90s. And Gary and I, when we served on the board back then, we had our differences, but we worked through it. There were times we agreed to disagree, but it seemed like we always came through to do what we thought was best for the city. And that's something I would like the future boards, the future mayor, to work toward. I think it's something that, you know, everybody talks about Warranton being in a malaise right now, and I think that's what it's going to take, is, is the board to take a leadership role. The mayor, the new mayor, who I think is very capable of doing that with the support of the board, but I, and we've got some new members on the board, and I think, I would just ask that that's what they do. There'll be times when you can't agree on everything, but go ahead and try to do what you think and feel is best for the city. I think Gary and I did it back in the 90s when we were on the board together, and I would hope that you, you would do that in the future. I would also especially like to thank the staff of the city, from Terry Thorne to Brandy to Gabrielle, Melody, Jessica, I mean, all these people, they made my job a lot easier. And I know there's, there's people that, I hear from the public, you know, they come in here and they say, ah, the city, da-da-da-da-da, and all this. Believe me, the people that are working for the city, they are trying to serve the public, be it Kathy, when you come into the front desk and have an issue there, they will try to be as friendly and, and helpful as they can. Same way with Guy and Jack on their end of it, and Brad, they're all trying to do their best for the, for the citizens of this city. And I know there's times when, when people are going to come in, they've got a bone to pick. Just, just remember, be a little patient and, and try to put yourself in their position, because they deal with a lot of, a lot of irate people sometimes, and, and so bear with them. I mean, they're, they're there to serve you, and like I said, every one of them that I've dealt with in my short time here have been excellent. So that being said, I would tell the conspiracy theorists out there that always think that there's something going on with the city, that the city's trying to hide something from everybody, go look for something else to find. There's not, there's not a conspiracy here to keep anything from the public. This, this city is trying to be more transparent than ever for all the citizens. So believe me, there is no conspiracy going on against the citizens or against any citizen in particular. They're just working to try to make this city as, as good as it can for everybody involved. Chief Hottishell and his staff, I know they catch a lot of grief because they, you know, you hear people say, well, they're, you know, the municipal court, they're just out there writing tickets to do this and that. They're not. Believe me, people, I've, I've seen them in action. They're out there for the safety and welfare of the citizens. They're not just out there to write tickets and try to find fault with people. Their main concern is, is the safety and welfare of our citizens. So when you see those guys out there, give them a thank you, be it the, one of the law enforcement officers or one of the city workers, tell them thank you for, for, for doing a good job. That being said, I would also like to echo what Eric said about the emergency that we had last Sunday. You know, we've had a couple of them in the last week. I don't know if that's good or bad, that, that Warranton, you know, we had the gas leak, which everything worked out well. This was a little bit bigger deal, but I would like to extend the greatest of compliments and thanks to not only our police department, but the Highway Patrol, our fire department, again, they said the fire department, whether Mike Owen being them, they stepped up, they kind of led the, led the charge to get it all done. We had help from some of the other fire, local fire departments. So this was a, a thing, again, like Gary said, it pointed out the problem with having one interchange. If I could just, and I don't want to play what if, but I would tell the people to stop and think about, what if there'd have been an 18-wheeler rolling down Interstate 70 at 70 miles an hour when those ammonia tanks rolled out? If they would have hit them, believe me, there'd have been an explosion that probably would have taken out the bridge. So everybody that was complaining about whatever, you know, the businesses being closed down for those four hours, whatever it was, what if you'd woke up Monday morning and there'd have been no bridge there, and then you'd have had to start thinking about, you know, we might have to live like this for a year? So one of the things I would like to put back in the forefront of people's minds is the secondary interchange. And I would hope that it's somewhere down the road. I know we missed our, we missed a heck of a good chance last year. I know Gary said there was funding problems and everything like that. Come to find out, I think there is some grant money available, going to be available in the future maybe. So I think the city needs to start thinking about working in that direction again. A second, second interchange, east, west of town, I don't know. I don't know what the MoDOT may have the answer to that. But I think we need to start trying to get support. We didn't have support from the county commissioners, we didn't have support from the Booneslick Regional Development people, we didn't have support from the Greater Warren County Economic Development Group. I think we need to start looking and working to get support for another interchange, not just for economic development reasons, but I think now it becomes a safety issue. Because what if they'd have blown that bridge? Now we're talking about if there's a major medical emergency on North or South 47, and all of a sudden, we don't have enough ambulances that can handle North, and they, the South has to go Strack Church, Pendleton. These are things that, you know, we need to start thinking about in the future. So anyway, I'll shut up. I think that's all I had to say. Again, I'm going to thank everybody, and we'll move on with the meeting then. Now I would like to ask for the certification of the election. Everybody has that, has those results, and so what do we, we just ask for a vote to get the?
Yes.
Roll call vote to?
You need the motion. Probably has to be over there.
A motion?
Has to be over there.
Okay, I'm sorry, a motion for?
I make a motion that we approve the certification of the election results by the county clerk from the election on April 7th, 2015.
Motion from Alderperson Holly. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Ock. Roll call vote.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to zero with two absent. Next, I think, do we do the oath next?
No, now we have the presentation of the plaques.
Oh, okay. Okay, well.
So if you could come on down?
While he's walking down, I need to point out that he has as many gray hairs as I did, and he didn't give me any of mine. I hope I did give him any of his.
You're going to stick around, right?
Uh, I don't know.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, he's in the middle. Should we photobomb?
Double up there.
Friend ought to powder his head. Everybody's a mean.
I'm okay with it.
Right, you've got the right class.
I didn't wear my purple.
All right, guys, if you'll raise your hands, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications for the position of Mayor Alderman of the City of Warranton as prescribed by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri, provisions of all laws of this state affecting this city, and the code of ordinances of the City of Warranton, and I will faithfully demean myself in office. Congratulations. All I have is a laser. Yeah, it's been kind of fun. You're a lefty? Wow, just think about that. Take one down, pass it around. I thought you left. Yes. Make sure her boss knows she left. She's ignoring me. Ready?
Yeah, I guess. Maybe, maybe not.
Your board's kind of heavy over here.
I'm telling you.
And I'm feeling kind of lonely.
That's right. What did you do?
We don't want to go there.
So I guess the next step on the agenda would be to take a nomination for board president.
Make a motion to elect Alderman Kastlerly as board president.
Second.
Be first by Alderman Ock and second by Alderperson Holly. That's roll call vote.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Actually, you should have abstained. Abstained.
Oh, abstained then. I voted for myself last Tuesday.
Oh, that's good.
It's a good point, isn't it?
Do we need to redo that, or? It's okay.
Three to zero.
Okay. Motion passes three to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the public for actually voting me in, and just let you guys know, I'll try and do my best that I can. I'll always be an open door that you guys can either contact or come to talk to. My phone, it doesn't ring very often, but I'm, I'm sure it will start to, and by all means, more power to it. I see that we have a lot of different people here tonight, and I thank you guys all for coming and supporting us as a board collectively. Appreciate it. So, thank you, guys. So with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion for the appointment of Mike Shaw Harvey to the Tourism Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Be motion by Alderperson Kastlerly and Alderperson Holly.
I have one question about this.
That, that was at the first part where the public was supposed to speak, you don't.
Is this to reinstate me into my last, the last part of?
Mike, come to the, Mike.
You've got to come to the podium. And I love how our staff is loving this.
Yeah, see how they treat, see how they treat the ex-mayor. No, my question is, is this to reinstate me to fulfill the last, to fill out the rest of the term that I was originally on, or is this a new?
This is a new five-year term, isn't it?
Not five years.
I'm sorry?
It's a new term.
It's a new term?
For two years?
Are they all two years?
I think they're three.
Three?
Sold.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make.
Before you sit down, sir, I got a question for you. The next, the next, after we do a roll call vote, I'm going to have to ask you questions, so just stay up there if you would, mind.
Okay.
We can do a roll call vote on that, please?
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Welcome back to the Tourism Commission. We had talked very briefly on this, but I'd wonder if you could please kind of explain some of this, the table sponsorship fundraiser for the EDC.
Oh, okay. The Greater Warren County Economic Development Group, they're having their annual dinner auction fundraiser, May 9th, and they requested, they would like the city to be a part of it. In the past, I think the City of Warranton has not participated in it for, for different reasons. I can't remember what it was. I know Mayor Dyer was in charge of it back then, so I don't know what, what the reasons were or anything, but I know they said the City of Montgomery, the County of Montgomery, I think Jonesburg, I don't know about Wright City, I think, well, I think Wright City through Farmers and Merchants Bank, they, they get a table too. Basically, what they would like to see is some support from Warranton in, in buying a table, which is, the cost of it is $800, and, and it would be, I think after talking to Terry about it, and she checked with Chris, there are some stipulations that we, we would need to, it wouldn't need to be all city people. I think the mayor's expressed interest in going. We would open it to board members, or I think Michelle would probably be one to go, be an economic, we're talking about Jack possibly and everything, but it's just something to, again, kind of show our support for, for the Economic Development Group. And there are some things, the city, of course, has got a deal where we can't accept any gratuities or anything, so any of the drawings that are included in the price of the table, we would not, we told them we would not be eligible for. But they, they are holding a table for us, based on, I told them, I said, we would, we would probably be interested in doing it, so that's, that's the best. I don't know if there's any other questions? It's just a case where I think we need to try to work more closely with them and get, you know, get.
I'm completely supportive, and I think that we should participate and have a presence. I personally am out of town that weekend, so I'm not available, but I'm completely supportive of this.
I am in town that weekend.
Can we send a board meeting, it has to be Board of Aldermen, or can we take somebody that was a board serving on a committee within the city?
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll decide that later, if we decide to do it.
Yeah, I agree with Tony. I would be supportive of getting the table. I think we need to work as team players on all economic development issues, and if this is an indication where it's felt like this is something that's important, then I think we need to be at the table.
And, and the city does have, we do have a budget out there for support of the Economic Development Group, so it's not like something that we're not creating a new fund or something like that.
Well, we are members of the group.
And we're members, yeah, so.
I would make a motion that we reserve a table at the May 9th Economic Development Council meeting at the cost of $800, and we will figure out who's going at a later point. Is that okay, Terry?
I'll second.
Motion made by Alderperson Holly and seconded by Alderman Ock. Can we get a roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I appreciate it.
You still have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
So with this portion of the agenda, we're going to turn it over to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Finance Officer.
Thank you. My first item for you this evening is a request for approval of the renewal for the health and dental insurance. Our health insurance with Coventry is open enrollment starting May 1st with a renewal date of June 1st. The renewal quote this year reflects a nine and a half percent increase in premiums over the prior year. It does include a new mandated 4% Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act amount that is attached to all health insurance plans of this nature. So related to our claims experience, the increase is five and a half percent. We had a 5% increase last year, so we have experienced some decent increases in our health insurance program. We do, did have significant claims in 2014 to 2015, from February to January. We did have significant claims in 2014 to 2015 from February to January. Wasn't a huge increase, but was about $80,000. The total impact to the city portion related to the cost of the new rates is about $43,000 annually, which includes the PPACA fees.
Terry and I talked about this a week or two back when they first came out. And one of my thinking on this was the increase is not double digits, which you're always free to sigh of relief when that happens. We had talked about getting different participation among the employee levels at some point in time in the plan or looking at plans where there was different choices employees could make. And one of the comments I made back to her is, you know, since this came in at a decent rate, I didn't think we needed to look at additional participation on the part of staff or some kind of alternative plan choices where you have a basic plan that everybody gets and they can buy up at this point in time. So I kinda felt comfortable going the direction with renewal. In addition, I think we have to remember that since we're changing the pension plan for the employees this coming year, they're gonna have to participate a little bit more in to the pension portion of it. So they are contributing more toward their benefit this year under the pension. So if you did the health and the pension combined, it would be kind of a double hit. So I told Terry that I felt comfortable at this point with the increase that they proposed. That was my thinking.
I agree with that. I'd make a motion that we approve the health insurance renewal with Coventry for a total amount of $52,012.
I'll second.
Motion made by Alderperson Casterly and seconded by Alderman Ock. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
The other piece of the renewals that are in place is the Delta Dental. Previously, this had an off-renewal date, which I believe was July 1st as opposed to June 1st. So in trying to get everything on the same plan, we had them go ahead and at JW Tarrell get us the renewal quote so that we can try to get them on the same year ends to be able to bid both plans at the same time. The increase here equates to 7% or $33 annually for the employee-only coverage and $92.88 for the family coverage. We experienced about the same amount of 7% increase in the prior year as well. The majority of the Delta Dental is paid directly by the employees as it is an optional coverage, whereas the health insurance is pretty much everyone unless they're covered somewhere else. So it is an elective type of coverage as opposed to what everyone has. Delta has proven to have... To be the company out here, but at least you have a selection of dentists locally that do support the Delta Dental Plan. So my recommendation is that we renew with Delta Dental.
Just out of curiosity, I had a good chance to ask you this, but I was thinking about this afternoon. Have we ever... And I know dental is one of the most difficult things to move from an emotional standpoint. We think medical would be, but dental, for some reason, is in place. You're really uncomfortable when you start moving dental. Did they... Did Tarrell offer any other options in terms of dental coverage other than Delta?
We did not ask them for options. If I remember correctly, next year is the year that we actually bid, open bid for all of them. There are only, from past experience, not from this year. There are only a couple of providers that actually have dentists out in the Warrenton area. We're pretty limited. Previously, we had the other company and didn't experience the satisfaction with the program that we have with Delta. It was very difficult to get claims paid. Employees ran into a lot of problems just with handling that part of it. So we did not ask them for something optional, and we certainly can go back and do that if you all would like us to do it. But I think we're gonna find there are not a lot of dental options in this area.
I'd be kinda curious. I mean, I think we can go forward with your recommendation, but I'd be kinda curious what an Anthen would provide. Is it Anthen Dental? Because we've switched our coverage at work, Anthen Dental. That's all they seem to be, pretty broad-based. I know my dentist up the street here takes Anthen. And I was just kinda curious if that's a competitive option. But certainly if it's not, I think pending approval, we can go forward with this, but...
We can certainly look at that.
It's just something to look at, yeah.
Sure.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the Delta Dental Insurance Renewal for an annual premium of $36,097.
Second.
Motion is made by Alderperson Casterly, seconded by Alderperson Holly. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
The next item I have for you this evening is just a request for approval of an update to the field rental policy. Brady has worked really hard on this to try to make it so that it's understandable and easier across the board for those who are interested in renting our fields to understand what the charges and the requirements are. We had several different pieces and parts of policies kinda spread out. So there really is nothing here different than several other policies that are all now rolled together in this one field rental policy. The charges are the same. The charges for the athletic complex, which are different than Cory and Lakeview Park, are still the same. But this is a much clarified version. It's broken down into a per-hour charge as opposed to $30 for three hours, which not everyone wants three hours of use at the park. So this is really just the clarification of what we previously had to make it simpler both for staff and for those wanting to rent facilities.
When was the last time you looked at the rates?
We actually looked at these back in 2013. Was the last... Really, when the other policy that we're now updating was done. We compared rates to some surrounding communities that had like types of facilities. So our rates for things like the lights comes from Musco Lighting giving us, you know, an estimated amount per hour for what the lighting charges are. So it has... It was 2013, so it's been a couple of years since we really did a survey to find out what other communities are charging.
The only reason I say that, because the one rate that popped out to me was the field drying agent for $9. Well, if we're half-staff spreading the agent, our cost is clearly gonna be more than $9. I realize part of it you recoup because you're also paying other fees, but it just seemed like, you know, what can you get done for $9 a day?
Yeah, that is purely just for the product.
Right.
The... Included in the rental on the... And that does not apply to Cory or those. For the athletic complex, part of what you're paying for in the rental is the field being prepared. So the labor is really part of that charge for the field. And that is similar to what other locations that have those types of fields are doing. You know, the field is prepared and ready for play, and that's part of what you're paying for in your rental fee.
So is this something we have to approve, or you're just showing it to us?
No, I'd like to get it re-approved so that it's formal board-approved, and we can go forward with something that's clear to everyone.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the new field rental policy.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Casterly, seconded by Alderperson Holly. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
And then an update for you on the comprehensive plan. At your desk tonight, you should have a copy of the final information from the stakeholder meetings. There's a summary that was provided by Bario of those meetings. I know you've seen these before in draft form, but this is the final version with all of those meetings summarized. This is available to the public on our website as well as all the other comprehensive plan meeting documents. And there is a survey that is now out there that we are encouraging everyone to complete. You can access that from warrentonplan.org. That web address will take you directly to the comprehensive plans section of our website, and the survey is right there on that page. So it is warrentonplan.org, and we would encourage everyone to take the survey and let us know what your thoughts are.
Greatly encourage that as well. I know several people that have, and they thought it was a great idea that they were able to do that online and be able to put their input without having to attend a meeting, and it would be it. They greatly liked it.
It's an opportunity for everyone. You can't get out to a meeting and then to be able to do that.
Out of curiosity, what color ones did take typically fill out the sort of the people last?
You know, I didn't actually ask how long it took them, but it seemed very brief. He said it wasn't all that long. It just, you know, went through. Answered questions pretty honestly. He just liked the option of being able to put his input in.
Great.
I believe Alderman Ock, it was probably five minutes or less. We did it as a sample when we were trying to make sure everything was working and actually went through and answered the questions. It is not lengthy, and it's all, you know, check-the-box type of thing. So I think if you had five minutes to do it, you certainly could get it completed.
I think we should encourage everybody to do that.
Absolutely.
Terry, since this document is public, right?
Sure.
If you would check out Item 3A I and look at that sentence.
There's an N, no segment.
Yeah, and it doesn't bode well for the first page.
All righty, I will point that out.
Very shocking that Karen Casterly would find that, because I'm... That's not me.
You aren't a speller?
No. I'm a spell checker.
But I would encourage everyone to go out there on the website and take a look at all the documents and information that's out there. Because there's a lot of information already posted, so...
I agree. I do. If nothing else, word of mouth travels fast. Just encourage people to go on there and check it out if you have time. Like I said, I've gotten positive feedback, not by a great number of people, but by the few that have done it, they really liked it.
Good. And then last, but certainly not least, we had a very successful cleanup day on Saturday. The weather cooperated. It wasn't raining this year as it was last year. And I don't know that we have a count yet, but we will provide you with all of the summary of the statistics. But what we do have tonight, I think, Brad, is the tickets that were turned in for the drawing. There's a very nice steel blower and a steel weed eater. And some trees. A tree.
A tree, yes.
So we'd like for one of you to draw. So that it's on camera, and everybody gets to see who wins the drawing.
This will be... This will be for the blower would be the first one?
For the blower.
Lori Hodge.
They can't have that.
Why? Because you may have that to be worked with?
No, I am ineligible at social...
I'm joking. You escaped the work.
Lori Hodge.
Brad Hampton.
Okay, Brad Hampton wins the...
The blower.
Bob, you wanna do it?
You wanna draw one up? Sure. We'll get one from EP4.
It was amazing. We drove by the recycle place on the way home.
This will be for the steel weed eater.
Mark Avery?
Mark Avery, yes.
Good.
That's for the...
Yeah, but the piles of Saran Rab recycle stuff was amazing.
Erin? Want you to draw one?
I don't know. How many guess we got?
This is for the tree.
You got two. Cheater.
You got two? Oh, wait a minute. That's...
No, wait a minute.
That was stuck together?
Yeah, it was stuck together.
Do it again.
Okay, well, this will work.
It'll work. It's just that...
Well, you just have to name it.
Brad didn't like the other one.
No, it was the same name.
Wow, Gary O. No. Joe Fenton.
Joe Fenton, okay. That is for the tree.
Great. I know I was out of town, and my son brought our load of stuff down.
Brad, what do they need to do to claim their prizes?
I will call them. They have the phone number on, I will call them, and then we'll make arrangements because the weed eaters and the blower, they have to go to Rob to fill out the warranty, and then I will get with them on where they would like the tree planted at.
Congratulations on it.
Well, if they need help, I got a place in my yard if they don't have a place like that. Feel free to...
Yes, you did escape that.
Bring it on over.
Greatly encourage Lori to put you to work, though.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Terry.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Next, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have my monthly report for March and April, or March, I guess, basically. Kinda getting back into the growing season, so we're doing a lot of grass cutting and cleanup and what have you, so...
So Brad, was there much damage out at the cemetery after our little vandalism event?
No. No, just minor stuff.
So no stones or anything?
No, no, no. Just tire tracks, all it was, so... That's all been taken care of.
Brad, I have a question that was asked of me that I didn't know the answer. As some of the trees out at Binkley have been cut down, are we planting new trees?
Yes, we have. Every year, we go down to Forest Relief. I go down and get free trees. And the smaller ones, we plant those kinda throughout the parks there. So, yeah, we're doing a Dyer, Binkley, every place, Cemetery. We've kinda been going around replanting, so just kinda keep them going.
Great.
You know, Brad, I've had a lot of really favorable comments about the tree that was placed out at the Binkley Woods in honor of my dad. And a lot of people didn't know a thing about that. I'm wondering if there's any way we can put some type of information up at the funeral homes? Because a lot of times, people don't know who they want to donate to at that time. That's not really what's on the top priority. But in hindsight, you know, there were a lot of people who saw that that thought, oh, that would've been a good thing. I would've liked to have done that. So if there's any just information...
I think we have a little flyer, I think, that we made that we could take up there. It's also on our website.
Yeah, people just don't think about it at those times. And it's just a bad time to try to think through that.
Yeah, I can see about getting some of those and dropping them off at both of us.
But I mean, the plaque and that tree out there is just... It's really nice, so...
Yeah, they really turn out. Neither with the ones that we have out, or people really thought they looked nice and stuff.
Yeah, they really are. They're a nice memorial.
Yeah, they're not nice-sized trees, so... Nobody has any other questions? Next item I have is the Arbor Day for celebration that Tree City we went to and that former mayor, Shel Harvey, and I went to attended down at DePere. This was... Actually, this was our fifth year. I didn't realize that. We got a little award there for that, for being five years of Tree City. And I think Mike was kinda impressed with the thing, and I hope to see a few more Aldermen with me next year because I think Mike will agree. It's kind of a neat thing to see and to see what all does take place and, you know, how special it is kinda to be at Tree City community, so...
Do we have this picture on our Facebook page? Because it's a pretty good picture.
I think so.
It's already been on Facebook, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, let's do it again, because I missed it.
Anything for you, Alderman.
Well, I mean, it's just a great picture. Did you see it, Tony?
No, I did not.
See? And we're all over Facebook.
Several times a day.
Next on the agenda is Guy.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Monthly report for March. Stein... I mean, the Cherry Street Alley water line's been finished. They might have a little more patchwork to do and dirt work. But the water line's in, and the old one's removed, and services are all hooked up.
The water tower looks great.
Yes, it does.
It's been interesting.
Yeah, it has.
The part of the water tower that we got going on right now is the lettering is facing the wrong way. So they have to come back in and redo that.
Karen would've caught that one.
So it's easier to repaint it than it is to move the tower.
Although I'm not surprised you're not asking for it.
So we plan on putting that, we plan on filling it Friday and it'll take a couple of days for that to disinfect and pass our samples. And then we plan on charging it in a second.
Excellent.
Are we going to replace the star that was on that tower?
We replaced, we took the old star down, repainted the work on it and put new lights up on the star and they're back in place right now.
You're okay with that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good, because I'd miss it if it was gone.
And the reason why we have to wait to put it online is they did spot repairs inside the tank and they had to paint them and they had to cure. And then when we go and repaint the lettering, we'll have to drop the water tower level down so the water level will be below the lettering of the towers until we repaint that. And they'll be in, I'm waiting for a date. They're going to tell me when they're going to come back and do that.
When are they going to start on the Agapi Tower? The water tonics we got?
We're scheduling a meeting with them. I'm waiting for a date that we can all get together to find out when that'll start. But we will let Agapi know well in advance when it happens.
I noticed that the street sign on East Ashland and Steinhegan, somebody either hit it or somebody was hanging off of it going by this morning, so.
Ashland?
East Ashland and Steinhegan, yes.
I'll take care of it.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on. Next would be Chief Huddy Show.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
This evening I have the monthly report from the Police Department for March. We show a lot more calls. Eleven hundred plus calls this March compared to last March. And the vast majority of those, as I alluded to, once we got back to full strength, is proactivity. Eight hundred and fifty-one of them actually are additional directed patrols, which are city parks and schools mainly. So the guys are out there doing what they need to do to try to keep vandalism down in the parks. That's pretty much all I have there unless there's other questions.
Yeah, I had noticed that and I had asked to get some information as to why we had a fifty percent increase. The part that I thought was good about your comment also was some of the additional calls or requests or responses to concerns in neighborhoods where they feel like there needs to be additional patrol because things may be going on. So to me, it's proactive.
Right.
We're there and we're responsive to people's requests for us to be present.
Exactly. And I think what you're talking about is we quite often get calls for traffic issues on various roads throughout the city. And so we go out and set up radar in those spots to try to keep that from becoming an issue. Just a couple of announcements. We do have a Special Olympics event coming up Friday night. Unfortunately, it does conflict with Boots and Bling, but that was really the only date that we had. It's the Turning Point fundraiser. So Tip a Cop Friday night from five o'clock to when we don't have anybody to serve anymore at Appleby's. And then a teaser, we are going to be putting on our first Citizens Police Academy this summer. So that's coming up. I will have more information about that in the coming weeks, but.
What is that?
We will invite business community, citizens, residents to come in and basically participate in a six-week program and get sort of the 10,000-foot overview of what police work is about.
Cool.
And that will include some firearms time, too.
But not geared solely for kids. It's geared for the public in general, right?
It is geared for the public in general, yes. And generally, we're looking at adults.
Are you going to, are you done with that topic?
Yes.
Or are you going to comment a little bit about Officer Weber's success with our drug?
I can. There was quite a bit of talk last week about what is probably the largest meth, amphetamine seizure in Warren County ever. It was a little bit better than five pounds. Our Officer Weber was very instrumental in developing the information that led to that as well as the observation of and leading up to the arrest. So he and other members of the department did a very good job along with the Sheriff's Department and the Eastern Drug Task Force in putting together a great case. And I see that actually having implications outside of our area as this guy came from Kansas City and probably parts beyond.
I just thought that was a great success story.
It was.
What we're trying to do here.
Before we actually finish, the Tip a Cop, I didn't catch what time does it start?
Starts at five o'clock and we will continue until we really don't have anybody else to serve. Thank you.
I know this is the portion where we actually do adjournment, but if I could take just a moment to recognize, there's several people out there, but one person in particular, Presiding Commissioner, Bud Mousi. I do appreciate you showing up tonight and really looking forward to working hand in hand with county officials.
Thank you.
So thank you for your support tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Holly, seconded by Alderperson Casterly.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Swear of adjournment.